Okay, I'll call to order the Santa Barbara City Planning Commission of November 6, 2008. Ms. Rodriguez, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Justice.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Chair Myers.
Here. First of all, I want to apologize for our tardiness. I appreciate your patience. I understand we have UCSB students from Bob Wilkinson's Urban Environmental Class. Welcome, and again, sorry that we were late. I know that you're here for a limited period of time. Mr. Cotto, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of exigent items?
No, I do not.
About announcements and/or appeals?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, at this time, we'll take any comments from any members of the public. For anything that is not on our agenda, if there's anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to our first item, which is a discussion item. It's the application of Dave Taber, agent of Casa Esperanza, property owner, 816 Casique and 110 South Quarantina Street. And we have Kelly Brodenson as our case planner that's gonna give staff report.
Good afternoon, Chair Myers and Commissioners. As you said, Kelly Brodenson, Assistant Planner. Today, we're presenting a two-year report on the Casa Esperanza homeless center at 816 Casique Street. In addition to planning staff, you'll be hearing reports from Frank Mannix of the Police Department, Rick Fulmer of Public Works, Mike Foley of Casa Esperanza, Gary Linker of the Milpus Action Task Force, and Sue Gray of Housing and Redevelopment. The history of the project begins with the original CUP, which was approved on September 30th, 1992. The CUP was for a homeless day center, an emergency homeless winter shelter for up to 230 people, a year-round shelter for up to 30 people, lunch service for 200 people, a detox facility for 14 people, and a parking modification to provide 39 spaces. 13 would be onsite and 26 would be located offsite at 712 Casique. On May 17th, 2001, an amendment was approved to relocate the offsite parking from the Casique Street lot to 110 South Quarantina, and also to reduce the total number of spaces from 39 to 25, with 13 remaining onsite and 12 located offsite at the new Quarantina lot. The PC approved an amendment to the CUP in 2003 to increase the year-round shelter from 30 to 100 beds, with specific requirements regarding employment, sobriety, and assignment to a caseworker. The CUP amendment was appealed to the City Council in 2004 by neighboring property owners at 201 and 209 South Milpus. After hearing all of the concerns, the City Council denied the appeal and approved the CUP amendment for nine months only. In that nine months, Casa Esperanza, city staff, and the Neighborhood Advisory Committee were directed to redevelop a plan to address neighborhood problems outlined during the appeal hearing. This new committee would return to the Planning Commission at the end of that nine months. In response to this direction, the Milpus Action Task Force was formed, and they focused on a plan to respond to and resolve neighborhood issues. On November 18th, 2004, at the end of the nine-month approval, the Milpus Action Task Force report was presented to the PC. The Planning Commission felt that Casa Esperanza had been responsive to the neighborhood concerns that were raised at the council appeal hearing, and they approved the amendment to the CUP to increase the year-round bed capacity from 30 to 100 beds, and they also increased the number of staff and volunteers from 15 to 18. And the parking spaces were also increased from 25 to 33, with 13 being onsite and 20 at the Quarantina lot. The Planning Commission required a six-month progress report on the Milpus Action Task Force recommendations, and a one-year report, and then a report every two years after that. The last report was presented to the PC on September 14th, 2006, and provided information on year-to-year comparisons on data, including the number of clients, number of arrests and successes, comparisons between homeless numbers in Santa Barbara County and other cities and counties, statistics on police activities, survey information on how clients heard about Casa Esperanza. The purpose of these progress reports are to provide you with information on compliance with the conditions of approval and what is being done to continue to address and improve operations, to reduce neighborhood impacts, a discussion of overall operations, statistical information of the numbers of persons being served, complaints received, and the response to those complaints, and parking demand on utilization should also be included. And so with that, I will turn you over to the next presenter, Mr. Mannix from the Police Department.
Good afternoon. My name's Frank Mannix. I'm the captain in charge of the patrol division for the Santa Barbara Police Department. The patrol division has the primary responsibility of handling calls for service, including calls that are generated by homeless activity. In preparation for our presentation today, we've done a statistical analysis of crime, which typically is associated with transient activity, and for the purposes of this presentation, it's confined to the Milpus Street area. You could have the next slide, please. What we've done is a 12-year analysis spanning from 1995 to 2008, and we've taken an area, four distinct areas, and we plotted them on a graph for you, and if I could walk you through them one at a time. First, the pink area, the shelter-only, represents crime typically associated with homelessness. I'm speaking about open container violations are the majority of these types of crimes, but also other things such as shopping cart violations, illegal camping, things of that nature. And we see in the area located specifically at what has later become Casa Esperanza, it's virtually flat here, all the way up to 1999 when the casa opened, which is about what we would expect, an increase in activity, obviously, when the casa opened. The next area that I'd like to bring your attention to is the shelter area only. And what this represents is this green line, and this means the area that is in a 1,000-foot radius of the shelter. So we take the shelter, not including the statistical information generated from the shelter, just in an area 1,000 feet around the shelter. This blue line that we see is a composite of the two. So this represents the pink line and the green line put together. So this is the shelter area stats plus the area within 1,000 feet. And then finally, the yellow line represents a geographically similar area north of the shelter, which we call Upper Milpus Street area, just as a basis of comparison. Now, what we've seen is that when the shelter area opened, we've realized a rather substantial increase in homeless-related criminal activity, peaking two years ago to a 693 percent increase overall in the level of offense reports. But the good news is, in the last two years, we've seen a 28 percent decrease in this area. So that is encouraging, and I'd like to point out exactly what is meant by an offense report, because there is something to be learned about this. An offense report is essentially a police report documenting criminal behavior. It can be derived from a call for service from the public, where a member of the public calls us up via 911 or other way, and then we respond to that call for service. It can also be the result of officer-initiated activity based upon an on-view observation of criminal activity. So offense report data is sensitive to the fact that when more police officers patrol the same area, they are going to generate more offense reports, just by virtue of numbers. And it has been necessary from time to time over the last 12 years for us to shift deployment into the Milpus Street area near the casa to address some of the homeless-related crime. So I'm not prepared to say that all of this increase represents a proportional increase in the numbers of homelessness, just that it represents an increase in the amount of citations given to homeless, since homeless are the primary recipients of open container violations. Are there any questions on those concepts?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
I have two questions that are related to the chart. I remember the last time that we were reviewing this, we talked about clearing the way around the Union Pacific tracks, and I think that happened right about at the time of this spike. And I'm wondering if there's a relationship, looking at this chart, that you can make between the railroad tracks and clearing those campgrounds out, and either the spike increase or perhaps the subsequent decrease that crime levels may have gone down in the area when the railroad tracks were cleared.
You know, I have nothing statistical, other than perhaps some anecdotal stories along those lines, but as we have knocked down transient camps in the Santa Barbara area, and we have knocked them down in many areas, it is just generally believed that this has caused an increase in transient activity in other areas. It is a well-recognized fact among police officers that as you drive someone out of one area, they're going to go somewhere else, and we see it. We see transient camps kind of migrate from area to area, and essentially, they travel the path of least resistance, whatever path that happens to be at that time. And camps do get reestablished. I mean, they get knocked down, and as bushes grow back and the railroad property becomes once again a viable area to pitch an illegal camp, you will see an increase in activity in that area.
I mean, the railroad clearing still is going on. I think the city's spending $150,000 a year, or some significant number, on continuing that ongoing operation, so I would hope that it's having a positive impact on this area. But I understand what you're saying. It may just be migrating to a different neighborhood. And then my second question is, some of these offenses that are documented are drug-related offenses, and I'm wondering if you see any link between gang activity, in particular drug sales, and the homeless population in the area?
Not a strong link, no. Much of the drug sales that occur in the lower Milpus Street area occurs in front of the labor line, quite frankly, and from time to time, the Police Department has had to organize special operations to suppress that activity. But that is an area which is easily used for a dual purpose, since hanging out in a line waiting for employment, speaking to people in cars who pull up to talk to potential laborers, is also easily duplicated by drug dealers. So it's a very difficult problem to suppress, other than by mounting a direct operation, which is very labor-intensive.
And do you track, are there any weapons violations in this population? People have weapons?
Typically not. Typically not. Most weapons violations involve the possession of illegal weapons, such as a dirk or a dagger or brass knuckles or some sort of club, and most transients, if armed at all, will be armed with a folding pocket knife, which is legal, typically.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions regarding patrolling.
Yes, sir.
Can you, has patrolling maintained its level over the years, or have you had increases in patrolling?
Good question. This area is typically associated with Beat 1, with a little crossover onto Beat 2, so those are the two geographic patrol areas that involve this area, the Casique Street Shelter. We haven't increased staffing at the patrol, so the patrol officer, for example, who handles calls for service, we would not have added an additional beat officer. We do have a mobile tactical patrol force, and you may have seen them. They're the men and women police officers that you see on bicycles, and this unit is specifically charged with suppressing street crime, commonly associated with transient activity, and they are mobile, and they go where the problems are most notable. And they do frequent the Casique Street area because of the obvious abundance of street crime there, but they also take care of the downtown area because of, crimes of this type are not unique to Milpus Street. They also occur elsewhere. So we have shifted deployment from time to time as the problem will escalate and bloom in one area or the other.
Can you give me an idea of the percentage of patrol incidents compared to complaint incidents?
No, I really couldn't give you a statistical analysis. We did do an analysis overall of how much patrol activity is occupied by transient-related crime and came to a 20 percent value. So 20 percent of our calls for service are generated by complaints regarding transients.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How would this chart relate to citywide? I think it would be interesting to see how this chart compares to the rate of crimes and perhaps of analogous crimes citywide.
That's a good question, too. Is, over the last 10, 12 years, well, further than that, but the Police Department tracks crimes by different categories, which we report to the FBI in the Uniform Crime Reports. They're known as Part 1 crimes and Part 2 crimes. Part 1 crimes are major felonies, basically, your rape, robbery, murder, arson, and petty theft. Simple thefts and batteries are included in your Part 1 crimes. Part 2 crimes capture virtually all the other street crimes. These are typically Part 2 crime documentation up here. Over the last 12, 13 years, our Part 1 crimes have plummeted throughout the city. As a matter of fact, last year was the safest Part 1 crime in the city of Santa Barbara in the last 12 years. Part 2s have mirrored Part 1s, but the percentage decrease has been less. So Part 2 crimes, which these represent, have also significantly decreased citywide.
Mr. Chair, what proportion of the city's street crimes would this represent? And I'm understanding this chart to say that there are, in 2005, there were a little over 600 reports of crimes. That's what this chart is showing.
Yes, it would either be a report or documentation resulting from an officer-initiated activity, which would be, for example, a citation for an open container.
Yeah.
Probably 80 to 90 percent of what you see on the board there would represent that single offense alone.
And so citywide, would this be, what proportion of the citywide number of these crimes would this be? Would this be a very small portion, or?
That actually brings us right into our next topic of discussion, so perhaps we'll move on. In order to address issues of chronic drinking, the Police Department has looked at some strategies in cooperation with the City Attorney's Office to try and bring a higher degree of accountability on subjects who repeatedly get these open container citations. And we've instituted two programs. One is a Top 10 Offender Program, and another is Zone Enforcement Program. Top 10 Offender Program, if we look at the total number of citations which the Police Department gave out, for example, last year, we came away with 5,300 citations for open containers. And of those 5,300, 2,300 were given to violators. So obviously, some of our violators there received multiple citations. But what we've noticed is 1,800 of the 2,300 received only one citation. So the vast majority of the people receiving citations for open containers receive it once, and then they move on. They never get another one. However, at the opposite end of the spectrum, the number-one offender received 83 citations last year. So to treat those two individuals the same, with the same type of citation, the same level of enforcement, really doesn't make sense, because one represents a chronic offender, but the other 1,800 represents one-time offenders. So we've instituted a program which recognizes, first of all, that possession of an open container in the city of Santa Barbara is a misdemeanor. Okay? It is a misdemeanor. However, for expediency purposes, because 1,800 of the citations receive only one, for expediency purposes, they're filed as infractions. However, with this Top 10 Offender Program, those subjects are filed as misdemeanors, because, after all, it's a misdemeanor, which, for expediency purposes, we treat as an infraction. So we bring, what you might say, the full weight of the law against the Top 10 offenders. And that offender group, the Top 10, for example, 10 individuals, represent 9.4 percent of the total 5,300 citations issued. So 517 citations issued to 10 people. So we had to do something a little differently. So fortunately, the City Attorney's Office has done just an outstanding job in cooperating with us. Now, the second program that I want to talk about is called Zone Enforcement. And what we've realized is that there are six distinct geographic areas within the city that represent 43 percent of the citations issued for open container. Six relatively small. Those areas are the 4- to 600 block of State Street, the library, the downtown library, the Cabrillo Ball Field, the 300 north to 300 south block of Milpus Street. So again, that area would be commonly associated with this type of activity. Oak Park and Pershing Park. So those areas, if a subject is caught with an open container in those areas, even if it's their first citation, since those areas are problem areas in the city, that they likewise will be treated with a misdemeanor prosecution as opposed to an infraction prosecution. So that's a brand-new program that we've just recently implemented. The Top 10 Offender Program's been in effect for about a year now. So to answer your question about, you know, what's the percentage increase, we have these other areas in the city which are likely negatively influenced. And just to give you a quick idea, those six areas represent 43 percent, but the 4- to 600 block of State Street, and then the cross streets inclusive, represent 19 percent. So State Street, we have a problem. The Cabrillo Ball Field represents about 10 percent, just in that one park alone. And then, I'm sorry, I take that back. The Milpus Street area represents about 9 percent, with the Cabrillo Ball Field being an additional 4 percent. So put those two areas together, about 15 percent of all the sites issued come out of that area. Are there any other questions?
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brodenson, who's next?
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Fulmer. I'm the Streets Manager for the city of Santa Barbara, and I have a crew of about 26 employees that maintain sidewalks, streets, and other areas throughout the city. One of the programs that we work on, both through the Milpus Action Task Force and also the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force, are neighborhood cleanups. And over the past couple of years, we've included them in our performance measures annually. And in 2007, when I talk about cleanups, also, I'm talking about all different neighborhoods that they might have a concern of people that aren't caring for their homes, or people that are moving in and out, and there's a lot of debris and trash, and the neighborhood itself is asking us to help clean it up. So we get involved with that. In addition, we also get involved with the police, with Caltrans, and, as you said earlier, the Union Pacific Railroad to do some cleanups. So in 2007, we had 42 cleanups. They could have been a full crew for a week. They could have been, you know, a couple of guys over the weekend. We often do cleanups on the weekend with swap workers, so people that have been in through the court system and have to repay their time through city service. And then in 2007, 42. In 2008, we had 67. So we are becoming more active in cleaning these different areas up, all different types of encampments. You had mentioned earlier regarding the Union Pacific Right-of-Way. The city actually has an MOU with the Union Pacific Right-of-Way, and they reimburse the city for all of the work that we do. We cleaned 5.9 miles from one end of the city of Santa Barbara to the other, over the last two fiscal years, which was actually a complete year altogether, about 13 months, and there were four days per month. So we had a large crew out there. We hired the California Conservation Corps to assist us in that, and then we sometimes supplement that with some of our crew for additional work. And that has been very successful. As you drive up and down the freeway, you can see the tracks. You can also see more areas where there's been opportunity for graffiti, because we've cleared areas. And in talking to other divisions, as well as the Police Department and Parks and Rec, when we relocate them out of the Union Pacific Right-of-Way, they do go to Pershing Park or Oak Park, or they're down at the beach and camping. So there's a constant movement around. In addition to that, when we started doing our graffiti removal a couple of years ago, in the 2008, we removed 123,241 square feet of graffiti. That's a large number. And then this year, to date, so we've only done three months this year, we've almost removed 50,000 square feet. We track that on a weekly and a monthly basis, and that goes toward our performance measures. Other programs that support just keeping the whole area clean are our street sweeping program. This fiscal year was the final expansion. We were doing 80 percent of the city as far as cleaning goes. And I mentioned earlier, also, as well as Frank did, the homeless encampment dispersals. We started a couple of years ago when we did, and that might actually be the 2005 spike, was TV Hill. I think that was around that time, and that was a huge group of people, all over the place, to clear that, as well as the property owner, and then to fence that off to clear out the encampments. And then from that point, then we started to work on Union Pacific Right-of-Way. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I've got a question regarding the drop in graffiti. Do you have an explanation for that?
It's not a drop in graffiti. That's the first three months of this year.
Oh, three months?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was to date this year.
No, and the graffiti varies. Obviously, when we have holidays, school holidays, and things like that, we see a spike. And depending upon any rivalries that may be occurring, we see spikes. But we work in conjunction with the Police Department. We take photographs. We share them with the Police Department. We keep track of that kind of information so that if an individual is caught, that there is some retribution that can come, some funding that can possibly come back to the city for the work that they have performed.
And that calculation is just Public Works' work, correct?
That is just my one graffiti guy, and sometimes he has a helper. That's just him out there doing that.
The people that take care of their private maintenance regarding graffiti is not calculated?
It's not calculated, no.
Thanks. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Specifically to Casa Esperanza, do we do any steam cleaning of sidewalks, or any of business entrances, or any of the neighbors around there as part of any cleanup?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. Actually, either of you might be able to answer this question. When I was driving around in the area and sort of fanning out from the Casa Esperanza itself, I noticed a lot of RVs. In some blocks are just five and 10 RVs, and they obviously are campers. And they're people that are living there for as long until the meter maid comes by and tickets them, and then they move a block over. What are the, are there related enforcement issues to that population, which is also in this same area?
We do have, the council had approved an RV ordinance not too long ago, and we placed, my crews actually placed the signs out there. So a lot of those areas, within that area, as well as the industrial area, there is RV enforcement, and the police are actually out there ticketing the people. And you can tell, because once we sign an area for some kind of an enforcement, like a no RV parking, then they move into your neighborhood or another area. So we are constantly looking at where they're moving and what direction that they're going, and as time goes by, we're adding more and more signs. So I'm not familiar, and Frank might be able to answer this better, but I don't think we've seen a lot of activity just from that type of person. Often, they are someone who is actually working every day, but they don't have a home, and they're living out of their motorhome.
I know that there's got to be at least one meter maid that does nothing but go around the Gutierrez Quarantina neighborhood and mark and ticket RVs.
We have meter maids that work various beats in the city. That area's included. That area is included in one of the beats. Much of the parking of illegal, or that's a bad word for it, of these RV homes is done legally. We had a fairly comprehensive ordinance a number of years ago that got thrown out. I'm sure you're familiar with that. Presently, it's illegal to camp out of your RV. However, when we try to enforce that, it's frequently thwarted by, by a proclamation from the RV dweller that they're not camping in there, or they simply won't answer the door, and then there's nothing we can do about it. If they park their car there more than 72 hours in a continuous fashion, they can be sighted or even towed. But generally speaking, these cars move every day. And some of them park in the New Beginnings parking lots, and then they'll move elsewhere. That program, by the way, is, seems to be very well-run, and, but nevertheless, the RV dwellers do go somewhere else after they are forced to leave the New Beginning parking lot designated areas. Unfortunately, much of what we see in association with RV dwelling is presently legal, and we have limited options to do anything about it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much to both of you. Hi. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about our success and our work. Since Casa Esperanza opened, nearly 8,000 unduplicated individuals have accessed services at Casa Esperanza since the shelter opened. And the foresight of this community in building Casa Esperanza has been a blessing as we deal with the economic downturn. In September of 2007, there were 68 intakes at Casa Esperanza. In September of 2008, there were 138, a doubling of the number of people who came for help. And in the last six months, 58% of those people seeking help stated that the last place they lived was right here in Santa Barbara County, which was a reversal of what we've seen in the past. In our last report, we told you that the number of people who received specific job placements at Casa Esperanza rose from 78 to 105. In the 12 months ending June 30th, 2008, that number rose to 195. In the last report, we told you that the number of people who received specific housing assistance rose from 115 to 128. In the year ending June 30th, 2008, the Casa Esperanza facilitated 295 housing placements, and the number of people that remained housed six months remained very high. In the last two years, we've added professional staff members who work exclusively with seniors, women, the disabled, and persons with drug and alcohol addictions. And we've maintained effective partnerships with the Department of Social Services and the Department of Alcohol, Drugs, and Mental Health on behalf of the homeless, despite the fact that budget cuts in the public care arena have been problematic. Those cuts have not touched Casa Esperanza. Casa Esperanza also employs the only homeless outreach team in the region that exclusively seeks to build relationships with the homeless on the streets and deliver them to shelter services. In the six-month period ending June 30th, 200 street outreach contracts, contacts sought care at Casa Esperanza. That's out of 400 total contacts. 200, almost half, came in for services, which nationwide is a significant success for a street outreach team. We continue to prove that if we have adequate resources, we will and do have significant impact on helping the homeless emerge from the streets and into recovery and stability. Casa Esperanza continues to do the best we can with the resources we have to build responsiveness and relationships with the immediate neighborhood. We continue to employ four members of Casa Esperanza who remove litter from the immediate neighborhood five days per week. This project is called Step Up. We call our people, who are typically called clients, we call them members. They belong to a healing environment. We don't have case managers because people aren't cases to be managed. We have resource coaches. We kind of try to change the semantics up a bit to increase our success rate, which seems to be happening. But the crew of members who go out is called Step Up. It's a first job. It's a chance to do something in the community that's positive. It's a pre-vocational job program that helps them move towards employment while providing outreach efforts to local businesses and the homeless. This team continues to remove tons and tons of trash from the neighborhood, continues to reach out to the homeless population, and continues to deliver written information directly to neighbors. Casa Esperanza has also hired an Associate Executive Director, Imelda Loza. She is responsible for daily shelter operations. She is the staff member responsible for answering and solving neighbor complaints and reaching out to neighbors as well. Over the past year, a letter went out to neighbors, hand-delivered by the Step Up team, introducing Ms. Loza and asking the community members to call her if they have any problems. Ms. Loza then personally visited 93 neighbors, primarily business owners and managers, and began the process of relationship building directly with them. In our last report, we described changes in policy where if a member exhibits behavior problems, they're given a plan of correction, and they're never permanently removed from the shelter, although many are unable to make the necessary changes that need to happen to return. This policy assured, however, that if a member is suspended from the program and is not permitted on the property, that absolutely no services are provided during that period of time. No lunch, no hygiene services. There's no services provided if behaviors cause them to be forced to leave the shelter. So while access can be denied to people who break program responsibilities, each person is given a strategy of activities to be performed outside the shelter so that one day they might be able to return in a more productive state. This strategy has proven to be effective. Among people who have been suspended from the program and return, having met the requirements to return, there's an increased likelihood, an increased likelihood of 20% that that person will end up in recovery and housing. Each person accessing the shelter continues to receive an ID card. We call it a membership card. We work to ensure that no person enters the facility, including lunch services, absent an ID or membership card. It is often misunderstood that Casa Esperanza is open to anyone and everyone at the time of a lunch period. While anyone can easily come in and get a membership card, you have to have a membership card in order to get in. It's sometimes difficult to enforce with the number of staff people we have, but we do the best that we can. The code of conduct continues to be enforced. Day center members are included in all statistics, including, the day center is included in all of the statistics, and occupancy limits are posted, and we work to follow those occupancy limits. And attendance trends are also monitored. As noted in our report, we've taken a leadership role within the structure of the Milpas Action Task Force to advocate for the principles found in the Santa Barbara Recovery Zone proposal, and neighborhood complaints are presented at meetings of the Milpas Action Task Force. This is detailed in your written report. Over the course of this reporting period, we found that there were two areas of CUP compliance that needed improvement. First, we installed a fire sprinkler in the trash bin area. And second, we added additional bike racks in the back of the building, and additional bike racks are stored in the lower Casique Street parking lot area if overflow is necessary. In conclusion, we continue to note that there are people who are identified as the face of homelessness, and those who are homeless, there are those who are homeless but never seen. Hundreds and hundreds of people come to Casa Esperanza having dipped into homelessness due to circumstances, and just as quickly find a place to live and resume their lives. Just as many, however, suffer from severe mental illness and insidious substance abuse addictions. Casa Esperanza has taken a leadership role in addressing the problems within existing structures and in new projects. We're now serving as the fiscal agent for Santa Barbara County's 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness, and we're deeply involved in every potential project that involves ending homelessness in Santa Barbara County. We note that nearly 100% of those who cause problems in our immediate neighborhood fall into the category of those suffering from mental illness and those suffering from addictions. We seek to change everyone's knowledge base to an understanding that just because someone seems able-bodied does not necessarily mean that they are able-minded. Their homelessness is a final symptom of an internal problem. Homelessness is not necessarily the problem itself. Therefore, we support all efforts to increase law enforcement in the area, especially severely increasing efforts to rid the community of drug dealers, and to increase the amount of social services targeted at the population. In every report to the Planning Commission, you have heard that crime problems in the Milpas area has increased. In this report, you have now heard that the criminal behavior in the immediate neighborhood is on the decline. This has been accomplished through hard work and creativity, through a better working relationship with the police, and that hard work continues today and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Foley? Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. Just one quick question. I'm looking at your statistics of where clients are emerging from, and I noticed a large increase in hospitals as a place where, what's happening there? Why are hospitals an increasing source of new clients?
Well, here it's Cottage Hospital. And I think that we have a better working relationship with Cottage Hospital. We have very specific procedures in place to make sure that no person experiences dumping in Santa Barbara County. You might have noticed in Los Angeles, there were a number of lawsuits around that. There was a period of time where people were very easily released onto the streets, and we've done everything we possibly could to have them released to us rather than release directly to the streets. We think that has a lot to do with having 295 housing placements, because we're catching people sooner and able to get them housed sooner.
So are they, do you send someone to go get them, or do they get a ride?
We have taxi cab vouchers donated by the St. Francis Foundation, and we have a specific protocol with the hospital.
Can you identify any, any city policies or some juxtaposition between where you are in your efforts and other city efforts that, that you'd like to see improvements in? Or are you seeing populations that are being affected that don't come to you, that maybe city policies, other city policies might be augmented to be able to help out? You know, I mean, you're an incredible person, and you've done an incredible job with this facility. I can't tell you my admiration for you. And you must have tentacles out there in the city that would, that might point in certain directions and might give this body a sense of that.
Let me just say that Casa Esperanza has a 25-member board. We've gone, since I came, we've gone from having a staff of 13 to having 27 people. This community has responded with grants and with support for the services that we need to actually help people. I thank you so much. It's embarrassing for you to talk about me when there's so many people in this community who have done so much to make Casa Esperanza and our programs work. I would, I would refer you to the proposal for the recovery zone. We believe that if, if most of those policy and procedural changes were to occur, that we would see significant improvements out on the street. For us, just to give you a background, one of the things we, I often tell people is that if you were here in the 40s and the 50s, we didn't call people homeless. They actually segregated parts of the homeless population, had names for them. They were inappropriate. There were names like if you were an alcoholic, you were the town drunk. If you were a drug addict, you were a junkie. If you were traveling around and you didn't have much, much to look forward to, you were a hobo. People who wanted to get a job but couldn't were bums. They were really negative connotations. And what we tried to do, which we thought was different, was to not, and what we've done in our political correctness is we've called homeless. We just sort of created this, this basket where we put everyone who doesn't have a house into this basket called homelessness. We believe that each individual needs an individualized treatment plan, but you can also group people by need. The needs of women who are homeless are different than the needs of men who are homeless. The difference of an alcoholic is different than the needs of someone who suffers from mental illness. So what we've tried to do is create programming that isolates homeless populations and try to knock those populations down. So one of the first things we did is we got workers to work only with seniors. Because it seems to me that in this city, we should have leadership that says, if you're over the age of 65, you are not going to be homeless and live on the streets and in our parks in Santa Barbara. They have, the opportunity have benefits. How can we help those people specifically through street outreach and through our work in the shelter? That's been, our success has very much been based on those things. So having more resources going in to help specific populations that we can identify with specific needs, we believe we can really knock down the problem of homelessness overall in Santa Barbara. So all of our effort goes to that. That's where the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness comes in. That's where street outreach efforts come in. We've proven that street outreach is a very effective thing. For us, we're entering the third year of many of our three-year grants, and we need to figure out how to keep these programs going. So for us, it's keeping it going, and I refer you to the recovery zone, which Gary Linker is going to talk about next.
Great, thank you. I have another question, Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I did my, my drive around that area in the morning, kind of on the early side on purpose, and I, I was very impressed with the Step Up crew. You know, I saw them as far over as the, I saw them working at the recycle center, and that was an enthusiastic, motivated, moving group of people, and they were out there with their trash grabbers, and, you know, it was happening. And I, I was, I was pleasantly surprised to see the amount of this little army out there, you know, going for it. So I just want to tell you that I saw that in my, in my driveabout, and I thought, gosh, this is really great. I wanted to go help them because, but I didn't have a T-shirt.
Sure.
But it looked like, it looked like it was going great, and it's sort of a, like a morning party, you know, hit it.
Let me just point out one more thing. I've talked about this in the homeless task force, and I've talked about it with some city council members. The area of Milpas Street that involves Casique from the beach up to the freeway, that area of Milpas out is a part of the redevelopment agency. And if you actually go on your drive-by and you go and look at individual properties that are in that whole of the neighborhood, that section, you will see significant blight. You'll see properties that are, have no covering over the fences. You could see rusted-out trucks, rusted-out cars. One of the things that I've encouraged is that if you, if you were somebody who was on TV Hill, and you were told you can't camp here, and you just leave, if you looked around Santa Barbara, where would you say is, this is probably the place I should go where I belong? We need to make sure that our neighborhoods, like these areas surrounding Casique Street, are not blighted. We can do things with facade improvement, we can do things with fencing, we can do things with lighting. And one of the things I've been encouraging is to try to figure out how we can make that the best possible, the best possible area that it can be, so that not only do people go there thinking that they're supposed to respect it, they're not supposed to throw trash around because the neighbors don't have trash property. If we can use the RDA to do that, I think we could increase the success of fighting homelessness and Casa Esperanza's success, too.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gary Linker. I'm the Chair of the Milpas Action Task Force, and I think I've been in that position for about two and a half years now. And we, we meet every two months or so, based on the needs of the neighborhood. And our role is to be a liaison between the business and the community and the police and government and Casa, and to work collaboratively to deal with any issues, any problems, any concerns, any improvements that we deem are necessary. And we are a large organization. Meetings can be attended anywhere from six to 12 people. All the businesses in the area are notified when we have our meetings. In addition, they are invited to send any concerns or problems to us, either by telephone call or by contact with the Associate Executive Director, or to email us. And we've been very successful in responding to those issues. But I must say, in the last six months or so, we've seen any concerns become kind of minimized. So we attribute that to a certain level of success that we think we're having as a task force. Over the years, we've been concerned about some issues that pervade the neighborhood and seem to undermine efforts to help homeless individuals. One of those is the sale of certain alcoholic beverages, which encourage intoxication. And we had a program a few years ago where we tried to outlaw certain large containers of beverages that were sold, and we had some success in getting cooperation on the part of individuals. But we discovered that, given the creativity of the marketplace, that unfortunately, those that wanted to drink and use found other resources and other means of accomplishing that. And so where sales of certain beverages declined, others increased. So what we've done recently is to look at what is possible within the law and what is possible in making a better use of resources to try to impact this problem. And what, what our proposal has been at the Milpas Action Task Force is to identify an area around Casa Esperanza. around Casa Esperanza that would include the Rescue Mission in the area, and call it, if you will, a recovery zone, suggesting that there are people who are in facilities who need our support in the immediate environment in order to encourage and enhance their recovery. Remember, I remember when I was a kid, whenever you drove past a hospital, there were always signs that said, "Shh, be quiet." Well, why? Well, you were asked to be quiet because people were sick. They needed to rest. They needed to recover. And so we're talking about a similar kind of idea and policy in terms of dealing with the problem in our community. And what are those specifically? Well, first of all, I'm sure you are aware that there are laws on the books that merchants are not to sell alcoholic products to people who are clearly intoxicated. Daily, we know that there are liquor stores and convenience stores and so forth that will sell alcoholic beverages to people who are clearly intoxicated. They stumble in, they stumble out. We would like the support of the city council to empower us to inform those individuals and to ask the ABC for their cooperation in letting them know that we are going to be watching closely, and that anybody who sells an alcoholic beverage to an individual who's clearly intoxicated will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. So that's one of the things that we're asking the city council to ask the ABC to take steps for. Another major issue is that there is a fair amount of drug trafficking that goes on in the neighborhood. Sergeant Mannix talked about the fact that there is a good deal of drug traffic around the labor line. We know that surrounding Casa, there are known drug dealers who surround the area and are very interested in befriending individuals when they leave the homeless shelter. There is a way that individuals who have been arrested and convicted for certain drug and alcohol offenses, mostly drug offenses, that it could be built in to their probation that they are not allowed to frequent that zone. And that, should they frequent that zone, that would be a violation of their parole or their probation. So we would like the support of the city council to ask probation and parole to add these elements when people who do traffic drugs in that zone to be forbidden to be in that zone once they finish their sentence or if they're placed on probation. That's another major thing that we'd like to see. That will, of course, require increased police presence. But what we're trying to suggest is that we want to send a message to the community that we care about the people who are in recovery, and that people who are at Casa Esperanza, people who are at the Rescue Mission deserve the full community support to try and carry forth the kind of things that they're trying to accomplish. So it's as much of a clear message that the community is sending to the people in the community, as well as laws that we think need to be enforced, or additional community resources that we think need to be employed to accomplish this. We have thoughts as well about panhandling. There's a city subcommittee that's been meeting on that issue to deal with that topic. We think that's a concern and a problem. It needs to be addressed with as well in the recovery zone. So those are the main points I wanted to try to make to you all today in terms of what we're trying to create here. In a sense, it's a therapeutic support system that we're trying to create, and a public policy that will encourage people to be serious about their recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Linker? Ms. Jacobs?
What's the status of the recovery zone? Has it been before the subcommittee of council? Has it moved from just a concept stage to something that's getting more crystallized? Has police and other stakeholders participated in crafting something? What's the status of it right now?
The concept was discussed at one of the subcommittee meetings. In fact, I led the discussion there on that day. And the results of that have been forwarded to the city council, and they're deliberating the issue, and we're presenting it here in hopes that it will make its way to the council.
I'm interested in this concept, and I'd be interested in hearing other commissioners' ideas on it or reactions to it, and also our city attorney and what the legal prescriptions might be on creating a recovery zone or something that has a special designation. The effort seems to be one that could use some discussion and definition here at the planning commission. And so I appreciate you for bringing it forward. And for folks that are looking for where it's written down, it's page three of Casa Esperanza's report.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sue Gray, and I'm the Community Development Program Supervisor in the Community Development Department. And I just wanted to give you guys a little summary of the City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations that has been meeting since June. Captain Mannix and I are co-staffing that subcommittee. It was established on June 17, 2008. There are three council members serving on the subcommittee. Councilmember Falcone is the chair, and councilmembers Francisco and Schneider also attend those meetings. This committee was put together to deal with five different issues, and they've had meetings on each of these issues now. The first one was on increased coordination between city police and homeless street outreach staff from various agencies. The second one, as Mr. Linker mentioned, was on the recovery zone or an alcohol-impact zone in the lower Milpus Street area. They held a meeting on aggressive panhandling, primarily in the downtown, but that was also, the Milpus area was discussed in that meeting as well. The fourth meeting was trying to curb negative behavior and require offenders to receive services, treatment, to get them on the track to recovery. And the last meeting that was held was on the utilization of existing shelter services to more effectively assist the most vulnerable homeless persons. This subcommittee will be making recommendations with input from community members who've attended the meetings or given emails or input in other fashions to the full council on strategies to address the five identified issues. The subcommittees met six times since June. Two working groups were also formed from the subcommittee and met separately with smaller groups to bring input back to the full subcommittee. And those were on the outreach with the city police, they held a meeting, and the panhandling. There were two meetings that were held on panhandling with members of the business community, homeless providers, homeless advocates, and city staff. The next meeting is going to be next Thursday, November 13, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the David Gebhard Public Meeting Room. And during that meeting, they're going to begin their discussions on possible strategies to address these five issues. It will be televised, not live, because I believe it's your meeting that will be live. But it will be posted on city TV schedule when those will be replayed, if you're interested in that. We have another meeting scheduled for December 18, from 10:00 to 12:00. That's also in the David Gebhard Meeting Room. And that will either be the final meeting where they formulate their recommendations to the full council, or if they need a couple more meetings after that, we'll schedule those as well. But right now, they're basically at the stage where they're pulling together all of the proposed strategies that they think they want to recommend to full council. There is a website for this, if anyone's interested in looking it up and looking up at the minutes for all the past meetings. If you go to the city's main webpage and click on, I believe it's Departments, and then Other Committees, it'll say Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations. But I did want to just make clear that during the recovery zone and alcohol-impact zone discussions, we did have the city attorney's office present at that meeting, and they gave input on that subject as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gray? I don't see any. Thank you. Ms. Brodesson?
Chair Myers, that concludes the presentation today. So if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you for a great presentation and thorough presentation. So at this time, before I bring it back to the commission, let me open up any public comment for this particular item. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak to it, please step forward. I don't see anyone, so.
Someone for the green slip.
Oh, please step forward. And if you could drop your green slip off with staff afterwards. Thank you, Ms. Larson. If you could identify yourself, please.
My name is Roger Huru. I'm a founding member of Casa Esperanza. In 1999, we had no idea what would happen as we opened up a homeless shelter on Milpus Street or off Milpus Street. You've heard a lot of information, and you've received a lot of data this morning or this But I want to go from the macro to the micro because both Captain Mannix and Mr. Foley have indicated something that is on parallel tracks. Through the gang meetings that have taken place, we know that about 10% of those individuals are the ones that the police department and others are involved with very frequently. Captain Mannix again indicated to you that of those 100 individuals that receive citations, there's about 10% of those individuals, or the top 10, as he refers to, that they interact with all of the time. Of the number-one individual, 83 in one year, that means that that individual is being, has interactions with the police about 1.5 times a week. And not surprisingly, 10% of the homeless are classified as chronically homeless. And these individuals consume over 50% of the services, both at the county level, at the city level, and in the nonprofit world. And the shelters have difficulty dealing with this population because most of them are severely mentally ill, have histories of chronic alcoholism and substance abuse. And the compliments that you gave Mr. Foley are much appreciated by at least our board members, and Mr. Foley is a very modest man, but he has done an incredible job for us. But let me share, while all of these good things are happening, I'm also the executive director of the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness here in Santa Barbara. Every shelter in Santa Barbara County is full, is full. Last month, Kathleen Bauschke, Executive Director of Transition House, turned away 20 families because her shelter was full. She's the only shelter on the South Coast that takes in homeless women and children. 20 families were turned away. Last couple of weeks, there has been national attention about the 10-year plan, and so there was good news there that since 2002, the 350-plus 10-year plans in our country, us included, have reduced chronic homelessness by 30%. These individuals, on a voluntary basis, agreed to come off the streets in the status that they were in: alcoholic, substance abuse, mentally ill, and placed in what we call the Housing First model, putting them in housing first, stabilizing their environment. And we have, and you have, a good example of that. You approved the El Correo. At the end of this month, on Garden Street, the Mental Health Association is going to open up their facility. Just broke ground in Lompoc on a 39th unit, and there's another project in Santa Maria that is going to be underway. And I say all this that while very good things are happening, we are seeing nationally that social epidemic, and I use that word since I'm retired as the Public Health Director, to say homelessness has become in our country a social epidemic that is costing us tens of million of dollars a year. Now, when I was commissioned in 2006 to do a study on homelessness here in Santa Barbara County to establish a baseline, we were spending, we collectively, the counties, the county, the city, and the nonprofit organizations, and I say conservatively, $36 million a year on homeless services.
Can I ask you to start to look at wrapping up your presentation?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Homelessness is increasing despite all the good efforts of Casa Esperanza, Transition House, Salvation Army, a bridge house in Lompoc, a Good Samaritan in Santa Maria. Homelessness is increasing, and Mr. Foley indicated to you that many of them, the higher percent, are now coming not from outside the county, but from Santa Barbara as their residents. So we have an opportunity, but a major challenge on how to address this for our community because we can't solve the problem in America. But there has to be a way that we, with all of the knowledge and abilities that we have to address this issue that is costing our society incredible amounts of money. Thank you.
Let me just hold you there for a minute. Are there any questions for this particular? I saw a lot. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm hearing that is a different theme, and I mean, I've been involved in the shelter since it was, since its inception, and the one concern has long been that the excellent homeless facilities that we have, facilities for the homeless that we have in this city has the proverbial risk of drawing people from other parts of the region, from Southern California or perhaps larger. And I'm hearing you say that now we're experiencing, in situ, increase in homelessness. It is not a migratory element that's coming on. Is that, am I correct in what I heard you say?
Certainly, there are individuals from other states and counties that are coming to Santa Barbara, but we are seeing a higher number of local residents. Now, is that due because of the foreclosure issues that we're facing? I suspect, although I don't have accurate information and data to be able to do, to say that, but I believe having 20 families, families just don't appear. And so when you see 20 families on the South Coast going to Transition House, I think there may be, Ms. Bauschke, you could speak to that in terms of, because I don't, I'm not privy to all of the details there. So what we have found, it's not because of Casa Esperanza or Transition House or the Salvation Army. It's what we know is that people are attracted to Santa Barbara, just like I was in 1967, because of our climate and because of the beauty that this county has. I attended a conference last year that was called a national conference of the East Coast individuals that were working on homelessness and the West Coast, and it was held in San Diego. And the conclusion of that conference was every community on the coast of California, and now on the East Coast, especially in the southern part of the state, attract homeless individuals. individuals because of the climate, because of our ocean. At Casa Esperanza, I don't think has anyone going around the country and saying, hey, come to Santa Barbara because we offer good services. Certainly, when they come here, they avail themselves of those services. But it's not because of Casa Esperanza. It's because of the attraction that we have.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs, did you have a question as well?
Mr. Huru, I have just a quick question. I know you've done a lot of fact-based research on this, on the statistics and data and economics of homelessness. And one part of the equation that sometimes we look at and sometimes we decide not to is panhandling. And whether addressing panhandling in a more aggressive way would make any difference, or whether the live and let live tradition that Santa Barbara, I would say, has towards panhandling, do you see any effect that being more aggressive or more enforcement against panhandling would have on the population? Or is it just a sidebar that has to do with how the community perceives the homeless population?
Let me try to answer that. I've been active in these meetings that the Subcommittee on the Council has. And I was amazed at the presentations that were made by the downtown business individuals and the executive directors of the motels, hotels, and food establishments. They testified that they weren't, they were not as concerned with the homeless individuals that seemed to be panhandling as much of these young individuals that they referred to as punks. Now, I don't know if that is an appropriate name, but apparently there are some young individuals who may or may not be homeless, who are on State Street, who are the aggressive panhandlers that intimidate individuals. And I don't know if I would go as far as threatening individuals, but are in your face. And the board, our tourists and our local residents feel really intimidated. And I think maybe Captain Mannix would be able to describe these individuals more than I do because I'm sure that his department is called on these individuals. So they actually made a distinction on that. I'm learning that panhandling is not illegal and some areas have restricted, like where they can panhandle. And I think the Subcommittee is going to be looking at that as well with the city attorney. But some of these individuals survived by that. And we know that a lot of them will use that money unfortunately to buy alcohol and use it for drugs as well.
That's more a part of the cycle of the addiction and buying the addiction substance?
Yes.
And thank you for your devotion to this topic and this population, both as a professional and as a volunteer.
Well, thank you.
Your share is stellar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
I just wanted to quickly address the issue of panhandling that you brought up. When you read through the recovery zone, you noticed that we endorsed a process called Compassion, Not Cash. And I can tell you that if I had any popularity with homeless people, that was lost when I started advocating against panhandling. We now have a street outreach team that's out on the streets seven days a week, and we know where people are, where the camps are, we know what people are doing. We know that 80% of the people who panhandle, now there's 20% of the people who panhandle who don't have alcoholism and drug abuse issues, but 80% of them do. And 80% of them use the money they get from panhandling to buy alcohol and buy drugs. And we've done some math. We attached some math to it. And we found out from the folks who are in the places where you can get the most money that they get between $45 and $50 a day. And then we started looking at all of the places where people panhandle. And we did all kinds of different calculations, and it comes to one number. In the course of a year, the people of Santa Barbara and the tourists who come here give a minimum of $600,000 a year to panhandlers. The law of supply and demand works. When you know that people are going to give, when a town gives $600,000 to people who ask for it, you're going to have people who ask for it. So it's against the law to tell people that they can't panhandle. It's against the law to arrest them for panhandling. But it's not against the law to tell the community that it's assisted suicide when you hand money to people who you believe are alcoholics and drug addicts. There are people who need that money when they panhandle, but 80% of them are alcoholics and drug addicts. And if we could just get half of that diverted from panhandling into street outreach, we could employ seven or eight more street outreach workers who could help those very people get into the recovery services that they need. It would be a big leap for our community. But I've said that on one side of the homeless issue, you have the folks who are pull them up by the bootstraps, and the other side is all you need is love. And you need to be pulled up by the bootstraps, and you need a whole lot of love right down the middle. And programs from this commission, from others advocating compassionate ways to end panhandle, to decrease the amount of panhandling, we support that.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public comment hearing for this item and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to compliment Mr. Foley and city staff and the nonprofit community for making this a real success. I think it really, it beams its success, and that's really special. I have no concerns with the program as it's running and the directions it's going. If there's a concern I do have, it's in the role and uniqueness that this program and others within the city plays in the larger regional context. My concern is that all of the services are provided, a large majority of the services are provided within the city. And I'm not sure that other communities like the City of Galita, the City of Carpinteria, the County of Santa Barbara, all of the entities that have to deal with regional problems, and this is in fact a regional problem, are participating in their fair share of trying to solve and contribute to successes like we have here in Santa Barbara. And I was wondering if there are any interregional or MOUs that are being pursued to try to address this dilemma of this insatiable demand and trying to bring other communities and agencies into the process of solving the problem the best we can.
Got a specific question to a specific individual?
It's not rhetorical. Mr. Chair, it's not rhetorical, but I'd be interested to hear from either the applicant or a city staff member that has any guidance at what we can do on the broader issue.
It's a very interesting question. When I was doing my study, I interviewed most of the city council individuals and the board of supervisors in all of our major cities. And one of the questions was from the county, what are the cities doing about this problem? And when I went to the cities, the mayors asked me, what are the cities doing about this problem? This is what I can tell you. And at Casa Esperanza, there are many services that are provided that are not part of the budget of Casa Esperanza. For instance, the Public Health Department spends in excess of $2 million a year to provide medical care to homeless individuals and has, in the shelter itself, a clinic that is staffed by a physician assistant and a public health nurse. There is a social worker from the Department of Social Services that has been on the streets for the last 25 years, and you probably read his articles in the newspaper. He knows them all and spends hours at Casa Esperanza itself. Mental Health has street outreach workers that spend time at Casa Esperanza. So you don't see these services as part of their budget. But in the array of services, no, the county is certainly a major player. The city, I believe, provides capital dollars that the county doesn't. Now, if you look at the study that Don Olson did, as I was doing my study, now it's a couple of years old now, but the city, over the years, has provided millions of dollars in capital costs for homeless issues, as well as through the human services. So the county, and there's no formal arrangement, it's like, no. I don't believe there's an MOU between the county, but I know that when I was the Public Health Director, like, that was a priority for us. And we are receiving federal funds to staff those clinics for the homeless.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Other comments, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. Well, thinking as a citizen, I can only say thank you to the people that are doing this work. And the benefit is something that we all feel and appreciate. Speaking as Planning Commissioner, I wonder how our land use documents and our land use policies can further those efforts. And that's why I continue to be interested in the recovery zone proposal and what aspects of it could be included in land use policy. And secondly, I'd like to think that the Redevelopment Association, in its last few years of existence, could address the blight in this dogleg of its area. And I don't know how the commission can encourage that. The RDA has its own way of operating. And yet, there is potential money and support from the RDA to address at least the concerns of the business owners in this blighted area. So I would like to see the commission be supportive of the recovery zone proposal. And hopefully, we'll hear more about it, if there is some aspect of it that can be included in land use policy, in general plan discussions for this neighborhood, in the Sustainable Neighborhood Plan that goes forward for Lower Milpus. I don't want to lose track of this after today, is I guess what I'm trying to get at, that we get a good report, we get a lot of information, we say, thank you very much, come back in two years and tell us how you did, and we don't offer concrete action in between. And we certainly could do that. We certainly have the ability to make a few land use type policies that could further the efforts in this area. And then lastly, panhandling is a really tough topic. And this is just anecdotal, but somebody told me that one of the parks had a exercise group, some kind of boot camp that was using the park to exercise. They're got a leader out there, and they're counting off sit-ups and so on. And the neighbors got mad, and the neighbors went to the city and complained and said this group is using city park property to make a profit. You know, the boot camp guys are getting money to run these exercise classes, and they're using it as an outdoor gym. And I thought, well, what about panhandlers? You know, here we have a $600,000 a year industry being conducted on our sidewalks, and I don't see anybody getting permits or licenses or any kind of enforcement for the use of that city property. So I'm often just befuddled by the claim that we can't really do anything about panhandling. We can shut down the exercisers in the park, but we can't do anything about panhandling. And I find that very problematic in terms of the service that the city does to its citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think that the many years that I've spent doing the work as a Planning Commissioner, one of the areas that I feel glad is to be part of this community is in the effort that this city has made to provide resources for people in need. We have a new Salvation Army building. We have the Rescue Mission, and of course, we have Casa Esperanza, all of which have been built in relatively recent history. And that's, I think that for a community of this size, that that's, I'll wager, that that's just way above and beyond the norm and something really to be proud of. And I also, it's of course tragic to see how many people are still in, that we're still not meeting the need, as Mr. Huru mentioned, there's families that are being turned away at this stage. The way it feels out there in the world, it feels like we're just, as Mr. Greenspan said, we're in the start of a tsunami. And I hope that we're also starting a, perhaps, an era where we're more conscious of how we can take care of the chronic mentally ill, for example, of these people who just need help and that they're part of our charge as a culture. I really appreciate Mr. Justice's comments about, through the regional compact, and I've alluded to this over the years. We have RENA numbers that enrage us. And there ought to be RENA numbers around facilities, homeless facilities as well. And it's, the geography of homelessness is really, it's hard on a city. And I happen to, I frequent, that's, I'm down there five days a week. It's just one of my haunts. And I see how that neighborhood is really impacted by the homeless shelter. It does, the folks that work there, and they're not that many, there are some folks that live there, but that neighborhood really does get an impact from that, from those facilities being there. And of course, that's, that can be discussed on every level, all the way to a nation. We heard Mr. Huru mention to the two coasts and the temperate coasts and so forth, as perhaps taking a bigger hit than other areas. So I hope that as we go forward, it's really as a nation, that we get a better handle, make bigger investments in this area, part of this, you know, these $750 billion bailouts. I mean, where's the bailout for some of this? Where's the infrastructure for some of these needs? And in that, in the face of that, I certainly am proud of, and congratulate the people in this room who dedicate yourselves to this work. And keep up the emphasis, this mitigating of the downside impacts on the Milpus area and on that neighborhood. I mean, you look at some, there's some really, some people who've invested a lot in making that area beautiful and a nice place to live. And I know that it's just going to take, unfortunately, just a strong presence by the outreach people and by the police to keep that conflict to a minimum. Thank you for your great work.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a native Santa Barbara, and Santa Barbara has always been an attractive place even for those who really could not afford a home. And historically, you know, one of the original enclaves for that population was Child's Estate before it was turned into a zoo, and now it's suitable for animals but not people. I think that this lower end of town, the proposed recovery zone, really does need more help and assistance. I've had my office in that zone area for almost 18 years. I was fortunate to be the architect on the Salvation Army project and also on the Rescue Mission. Mission project, and I think there are many of us that want to contribute in whatever ways that we have, and yet we still need to do more. This is another one of those situations that we, we can't build our way out of it, and I hope that perhaps there's a way to create an alternate to the labor line, which to me seems like an attractive nuisance to this very population that we're trying to, to help. And whether it's through Casa, Casa Esperanza or other organizations, if they can create their own in-house labor pool, I mean, this area is ripe with construction, and, and it's gonna have the, the freeway and everything going on for four or five years. If there was a legitimate labor pool so that you're not at risk, you know, picking up a laborer not knowing if it's a dealer or a laborer, that perhaps there's a legitimate way to get some of these people re-engaged and, and re-employed, even on a part-time basis, to, to re-enter society. So I hope that maybe there's a, a jobs linkage that could be a broadened base, that could be incorporated into some of these programs, whether it's a linkage with Habitat for Humanity or some other, the work efforts that could be handled through CASA as opposed to everybody going down to the street and just joining the labor line, where they probably will end up in more trouble than, than being pulled out of their current situation. I do think that this recovery zone is going to be necessary to, to bring that about, because I think that whole area is just the hotbed of all the activity, and I hope that the, the city can help in establishing the parameters for that and the, the manpower to help have that come to be. And I do think that it does greatly affect this Milpus area. Milpus is gonna be affected also for years with the freeway construction, and it's, it's really being hammered on all sides. So I think whatever the city can do to recognize that this, this problem is not evenly distributed throughout the city, or definitely not throughout the county, that we really need to focus our efforts here and really, I think, help with this situation. But I, I'm proud of what CASA has accomplished in its short history, and I wish that it had larger grounds so that it, it, it could grow, but I think it's so confined geographically with its current configuration. I, I hope there's other opportunities and other facilities that can maybe infill and help with this. So I think whatever we can do to at least encourage or expand the operational capabilities within the facilities that are at hand, I think we should, we should definitely try and accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I went trick-or-treating with my grandkids in, uh, North San Diego County, and every third house was empty in, uh, in a neighborhood where the houses average about 3,800 square feet. And I wondered while we were trick-or-treating where the people went. Where'd they go that day? Uh, so I've seen their cars for sale for very cheap prices, uh, the houses are empty, developers have walked away, foundations have weeds growing up through them now. I think that we have been very fortunate here because of our almost-built-out status, that we don't see the, the evidence in front of us that, that I am seeing in other places as I go. It's quite profound. And, uh, and another, uh, in January, I believe LIBOR is due to reset, and I think we're gonna see, we haven't reached the bottom yet. And, you know, when we're, when we are turning away 20 families, that's a polite number. I think we're gonna see many, many more. And I hope, I don't even know how to tell you, you know, make a plan, but I know we're all trying to do that. But I think that the need is going to logarithmically rise, and I, I think there will be a wave of, of crisis, uh, and I'm not saying that it will necessarily result in direct homelessness, but we're already seeing it in the rental community. As people lose their houses, they have to turn around and rent. Or the next step, job loss plus loss of housing, and then there they are, living in their cars with children. So I look at North San Diego County as a cautionary tale, and I'm very concerned that, uh, preparation is everything, and I'm just concerned that we not ignore that as we're doing our planning, and I, I, everything that we've said here today is, yeah, I agree with, I think the job is tremendous, it's being done, but I'm afraid the job is going to be, it's even going to be bigger. So, uh, that's, that's my concern. The other thing is that I have had on my mind since I did my walkabout there and drive around and all that jazz, is, um, I think that, that it might be considered, um, a good idea to have a steam cleaning schedule for the sidewalks. And just, I don't think it, I don't think it would take a lot. I think that the city should consider doing that, I think in terms of hygiene and, and, uh, for the businesses as a, as a help. It's just, uh, something that would increase the, the walkability of that area by people like, just, you know, people who are walking to the beach or something. Anyway, um, but I certainly, certainly support what you're doing, and I think, I, I think that, um, that the most fragile, uh, the most fragile of every category, I consider a person who is addicted, I consider that person that gets cited over 80 times to be an extremely fragile person. That's a person who's gonna die from, from their addiction. It's just a, a matter of a short time, not a long time. It's rough and tough. So the, the compassion and the ability to outreach to this fragile, these fragile populations, uh, it, it speaks for the society we live in, and I think that, uh, I think Santa Barbara does a great job. The only thing I'm worried about, though, is if we, if we go after some RENA numbers for homelessness, we might get treated again, as we have just been treated, although treated wasn't the first word that came to mind, uh, by the same group that was so generous with the last numbers we got. So, so beware, because we don't want 'em bust in. So, um, uh, anyway, I appreciate what you're doing, and keep up the good work, and I was so impressed with the step out, that was ladies I saw, you go, girls. It was good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vincent?
If I may address a couple of the commission's questions that have come up during this discussion. Uh, I don't want to leave anyone perplexed, although I'm not gonna address the, the panhandling issue, that is just way too big.
Thank you.
I do want to touch on two things, the recovery zone. There are others in my office who are working on that proposal and the issues that are presented by it, the challenges to some of its propositions, the, and so I don't profess to have the, the specific details. To give the commission an overview of the two items or the two major points that were discussed today, the clearly intoxicated sales and the probation terms, while the recovery zone may be described in geographical terms, in the, and uses the term "zone," which you're very familiar with from the zoning ordinance, it sounds to me like this is a geographical concentration of effort, not a land use tool. We have looked at using land use tools in this area to, to tackle some of these issues in the past. People have proposed conditional use permit overlays for alcohol establishments and so forth. Those are of some limited effect because of the existing non-conforming policies and, and allowances under zoning law. There already are liquor stores there, there already are mini-marts there. Any land use overlay that we might anticipate or wish to put over this area would necessarily grandfather those establishments in, and the sales would continue. So while the, the recovery zone may be described in geographical terms, it really isn't involving what, what the commission is familiar with as far as land use, um, land use tools. Specifically, the, the probation terms, that's gonna take a lot of cooperation, not only from our police officers and gathering information about these individuals, it's also gonna require the assistance of the district attorney's office, the probation department, and the local judges in order to put those terms, and they have to be appropriate terms under constitutional standards, into the, the probationary terms of these individuals when they're convicted. So that's gonna take a lot of cooperation from not only our agency and our city, but also county agencies and, and other institutions. The intoxicated sales, the, the, the issue I see there is really, that's a manpower issue. It would, from what I can tell, and maybe Captain Mannix could speak more specifically to this, would be, that's, you're, in order to prove that case, you're gonna have to have basically a law enforcement officer in that building watching the sale occur, and that's just a manpower issue. So, um, while I'm not, I'm not professing one way or the other about the, whether we can handle that or, or if that's the appropriate use of, of our law enforcement resources, but, again, it's, it's not a geog, it's a, it's a geographical targeting of resources, but it's not a land use issue. The last one I want to touch on is, is the discussion of RENA. The last update of the RENA statute, in fact, added in a requirement in order for cities and counties to have their housing element, um, certified, they must also show that their zoning allows for shelters. So there is a RENA, there, RENA has captured this issue, but as you are all very familiar, the RENA requirements require the zoning to show the ability, but not the actual construction of such shelters.
Thank you. I think that really clarified a lot. I, I know that the commission is strapped here with land use, uh, policies that we have to constrain ourselves with, and when we are, when we are faced with something like this, uh, we really search for ways to try to, to try to, um, get our little fingers in and improve areas where, uh, we might not, you know, be able to. We certainly, uh, uh, do have a city that is incredibly compassionate and committed, and not only in, uh, the agencies that were mentioned here today, but all of the nonprofits that do such a great job in, in, um, addressing these challenged populations. And, um, and I think that it's sort of, we feel like it's taken care of because it's, uh, because they're so successful at it. And, uh, occasionally we, we are confronted with not only the, the problem that we have at hand, but one that is bound to grow with, uh, the, the challenges that we, we see coming down the pike, and it's going to be interesting to see how, how we handle that. It's, it's too bad that we can't, uh, use the general plan a little bit more effective to, to, uh, allow some of these, uh, proposals to, to be integrated into land use policy a little bit more, but, um, I think as long, if we keep, uh, hammering away at it and, and our support, uh, we can, we can certainly cause some effect. Uh, Mr. Thompson, did you have anything? No? Well, we certainly admire and appreciate, uh, all of your good work, and, uh, thank you very much for the, for the, uh, the thorough, um, presentations. Thank you. Does staff have anything else? No? Thanks again. Okay, this brings us to our administrative agenda, item number four. Have any committee and liaison reports? I see none, so we'll have the review of the staff hearing officer?
Mr. Chair, um, there have been two, uh, staff hearing officer, uh, hearings since we met last. There are a total of three, six items that have been considered. Sort of fairly, the, the common themes, and I would wager, we go back and look in, in the, through the graphs on it, and it so often ends up being parcels that are, um, uh, smaller than the zoning normally allows, number one. Number two, it's, there's structures that are in place that, uh, don't meet today's setbacks and, and a, and an addition is being made to, to illegal, non-conforming structures. And we see, uh, a number of those that, that occurred in, in the last two hearings, and, uh, we're also seeing Ms. Riordan be a, I think, a good, tough task mistress and, uh, meeting out, uh, not necessarily everything that, that people are asking for, but, but what they need. And, uh, window openings that are in the setback, they're remodeling a home, and, uh, porch where they ask for nine feet and they get five, and, uh, a total of six items. I won't go over the particular addresses, but, uh, they were, they were approved, uh, as I say, some not completely, but, uh, some partially. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the previously reviewed and amended draft minutes of August 14th, 2008, draft minutes of September 10th, 2008, September 11th, 2008, September 25th, 2008, and October 9th, 2008.
I'll move.
Second.
A second by Mr. Justice, first by Ms. Jacobs, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. I will remind you that it is First Thursday. Good night.